It is six thirty, so we will get started. Welcome to the RSU Board, Team, and the R.A.N.D. School District Board of Directors. Tonight, we have a public hearing and special meeting. It is February eleventh, it is six thirty-two. Mr. Superintendent, can I have a roll call, please?
Sure can. Kate Brooks, Eric Colby, Jennifer Fleck, Daniel Forison, Marge Caboni, Pete Pinsel, Jen Moore, Don Villon, Jerry Keen-Doyer.
Good evening, and thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. We will be having a public hearing on what we are proposing for the cost sharing formula, and the vote for this will be on March eighteenth. I would ask that if you have any questions, that you come to the podium, please give your name. Also, we would, we're going to try to limit folks to at least three minutes, and if you have questions and we are not able to answer them at this time, or explain sufficiently at this time, the answers will be posted on the website. We'll start off, Mr. Davis.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I as well want to thank you for being here tonight. I think maybe the way to frame this is to start with some information, which essentially is that what we're discussing tonight is the local component of the cost sharing between the two communities, Wyndham and Raymond. Folks know that we have a forty-one million dollar budget, and the biggest part of that budget is under the auspices of central services and programs at the state level. And so therefore, the amount of money that we're referring to tonight in terms of the cost share is the additional share assessment, which is three point seven million, and benefit education, which is another two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so roughly four million dollars is the amount of money that we're discussing tonight in terms of the change in the cost sharing formula. I think as folks know, the plan called for a cost sharing formula that is presently in play, which talks to computing the three-year prior average of additional local that was assessed by the communities prior to consolidation, and that is stayed in play since that time. We use the factors of roughly forty-five percent of Raymond expense and fifty-five percent of Wyndham. So again, those are the dollars that we're referring to. In our certificate of organization, it also called for a couple of things. One is that the formula will stay in play for a couple of years, and at that point, the school board may, at their discretion, look at the formula, but within five years, they need to take some form of action. We were in our sixth year, so at the end of last year, the school board determined based on its level of workload, that they would make that a high priority for this year, and so that's why they engaged in this process. And so initially, what happened was the board created a subcommittee, board members and some administrators, to provide a proposal to the school board, which was then brought to the school board, and essentially is what we will be saying tonight in terms of what was voted by the school board, and so they're looking for your input here tonight on that. So what the subcommittee did was, we were fortunate enough to have Jennifer Fleck, who's also a board member, and a trained professional actuary, be able to look at the EPS formula and create, if you will, our own unit allocations by community. And having done that, we found some very interesting information. But before I go into that, I think what I would tell you is that the regional planning committee that developed this formula thought, you know, very long and hard about what might be a fair formula, and then devised that formula as it currently is. What we've come to learn in this journey, I guess we could call it, is that across the state generally, what people are looking at is fiscal capacity, which means what's the state valuation of properties within the district, or pupil counts, or a combination thereof. This particular subcommittee and the board has recommended that you look at the assessed valuation component as the methodology. And the work that Jennifer Fleck did for the subcommittee really was in a place where it proved out that that was the best methodology for this particular merger. And so we also looked at some other things, which was looking at what the actual expenditures were in the budgets prior to consolidation, and our guess as to what they might look like into the future. And so you can see that in Wyndham, you know, eight oh nine, on the left-hand column, twenty-nine point nine million, and also Raymond, eight point nine million. The middle column that reflects negatives initially in oh nine ten is the reduction in the operating budget, one point oh nine, and so forth down, and we use that same methodology as if the district was still separated, and just use those percentages to come up with what might have been budgeted by the singular communities this year. So you can see that Wyndham would have conceivably been three, thirty-one point six million, and that Raymond would be about nine point four million. So this is the methodology that, again, goes back to looking at what the state formula for EPS is, and drilling down to see what those percentages might look like for each community, again, coming up to the sixty-four percent for Wyndham and thirty-six percent for Raymond. And as it turned out, what we learned was there was slightly different state funding well for the town of Wyndham based on the fact that it was a parish district. So as we get closer to the actual recommendation, the committee and the school board was also very interested in making sure that it was a very easy thing for people to see and understand in terms of the subsequent years as we proceed forward with the district. So that is to say that every year, the school district receives information from the state that describes what the state valuation is for the communities, and the percentages are printed on what we call the ED two seventy-nine, which is a financial form that is sent to every school system across the state. So in subsequent years, what will happen is, we will know, because it will be printed in the document, what those percentages are, and it will change based on whatever the assessed valuation changes are for the two communities throughout time. So that's essentially how we look at the unit allocation from the state. So the recommendation was a couple of things. One is to look at those assessed valuations back three years average, because that would be fair for both communities. And then the initial change to the new formula would be to phase that formula in over three years. So essentially, you can see that for Raymond, forty-five percent in fifteen, forty-two in sixteen, thirty-nine in seventeen, and thirty-six percent in eighteen, and you can certainly win the numbers as well. So based on the projections from the community assessment, essentially by reducing what would be needed from Raymond and increasing what would be needed from Wyndham, this was my calculation based on home values of two hundred and fifty thousand, and what the change would look like in each community as a result of the change of the formula. So the debt service sharing came about as a result of some interest in what may be happening in these communities in terms of the buildings, and so I know folks are familiar with the fact that the Wyndham Middle School is overcrowded in the name of some capital improvement, and as a result of that, there was some discussion relative to what might happen if there was a need for schools to be either renovated or built. What I want you to know is that the board did create a subcommittee of stakeholders, so it was not entirely board members and administrators, it also brought in community members to make recommendations to them. And so that committee did make recommendations, probably have seen the many documents that have been developed since that time, which show, you know, what the recommendation of that committee was to the school board. You also need to know that at this point in time, the school board has not ever had an opportunity to discuss those recommendations in session, so there's been absolutely no decision relative to what those recommendations are. Chair of the board, Marge, has recently charged that the board's subcommittee facilities will be ramping up very soon, in the next month or so, to start looking at those recommendations to see, you know, what might come of those. But in any event, in terms of the cost share, the way that it's been devised at this point is that the capital projects that occur in each community would then be borne by the community to the capital enhancements of the main. So that's to say, this is a hypothetical example to understand if there was to be a new middle school built in Wyndham, then that component of the debt would be transferred totally to the town of Wyndham's inhabitants as opposed to Raymond. Likewise, if Raymond decided to do enhancements to the Raymond Elementary School, which are the small school, those capital improvements would be charged specifically to the residents of Raymond. So that has been a component that was built into it based on the feedback that we received from the public. For those who may not be aware, this school was built up at a larger capacity than the student capacity, and that was because, at the time, folks were hopeful that Raymond students would attend the school, so this is a larger auditorium than the state would pay for. Actually, some of the hallway spaces larger, things of this nature, and so there is a state-approved component to this site, and then it's a local-only cost, and Wyndham bears the cost of that. In the initial agreement, the Raymond contingent agreed that they would pay for a component of the local-only debt service for this particular site. I think the next one's a little more specific, or not at this point, but a little bit later So I think what is important to note is that large capital expenditures that don't require new debt will be treated in a similar manner in the basic cost-sharing formula, so it's not just debt services, it's major and minor capital improvements to the plan. This is more specific, a lot to read, but I thought it was important that people understood that when we talk about what the town of Raymond pays for the local-only debt at this site, that the total debt, as you can see, is one point seven nine million for the approved component, and that the debt service would be. Local-only is five hundred and fifteen, which Wyndham pays four hundred and twenty-six thousand, and Raymond pays eighty-eight thousand dollars. Again, that's based on what I call capitation, if there's a thousand children in the building and two hundred of Raymond, that's a percentage factor for that particular component. Is that's that? So I think we're here to answer any questions you may have, and to open up the podium if folks who may want to speak to the cost-sharing proposal.
Anybody wants to come up and need any clarification on what they heard?
Please, Lester, Jen Hartland-Lang, Raymond. I have a question about delaying the percentages over three years. According to the agreement on number eight, under, what's the title? Altering the Cost Sharing Agreement, it says that any change in the cost-sharing formula shall become effective if the first budget year comes in significantly twenty days after the action of the voters, and shall remain in effect for a minimum of three years. Doesn't say the changes, doesn't say the number changes, it says that number that it was voted on will remain three years.
Well, I think my answer is that it can be devised that you can phase in the plan as easily as not.
Doesn't say that.
Doesn't say that you can't.
So I'm going to accept the fact that you could change that any way you wish, when it stays, it will be in effect for a minimum of three years.
No, what we're saying is the phasing will be as we stated, and that will be what it is for those three years at minimum. We know that we don't have to look at the formula again for additional two years, which is five years, so at that point, it will be fully phased in in the year four or five.
I for one would like to see you writing, stating, and do that.
Try and put a little.
Teresa Sayaf-Brandon, I have a couple of questions, if you can agree. One of the things that you brought up there, Dawn, was on that large capital expenditures that do not require new debt will be treated in similar manner. To me, if you don't have any debt, you're not really splitting any money, because there is no debt to split, so I guess I want that clarified. The other thing is, at the meeting that we invited you guys to, I know the question also came up, is this even legal to do, and how would this whole process work, the cost sharing? And we haven't heard back as to, would Raymond put together a committee to say we want this done to the Raymond schools, and we bring it to the RSU, and the RSU, who is supposed to be consolidated unit, vote on what we can do in Raymond? And then these, again, these were the questions that were brought up at the meeting that we came to, and if we could get those the answer, as to how it would work. The other thing, as far as the us and them as consolidated school, building a new high school with no state funding is completely different than expenditures that are done as far as, like, prior, for example, the R.S. right now is looking to get work done on the playground, is what it is, and it's up in the air as to who's going to pay for that and how that's going to be split. I know the primary school had a lot of work done that's being split, I believe, but I'm not 100% sure Manchester had work done in the playground, but I'm not positive on that. That was just, I heard, so I wasn't sure. So I guess I'd like to know how that whole thing is split up. And the other thing is, you're talking as far as looking back three years, as far as fair for both towns, for the numbers, how is it fair for Raymond to phase it out three years when Raymond has to pay those totals out for three years instead of getting pretty much the instant savings? Thank you.
Thank you. I think I can answer some of those questions, which would be, in terms of the method in which the language was crafted for the sharing of those capital improvements and minor capital improvements, that comes directly from statute twenty-eight, and there's some sightings that I could certainly post to the website, if you could take a look at those, which define what a major capital project is and what a minor capital project is. I'm going to skip right to the IRT, because that was a question you had, and it's true, the way that this is devised right now, to the extent that, again, a major capital project such as a middle school in Wyndham would be borne by Wyndham, likewise, for example, this building needs roofwork in one section, we know Jordan Small needs roofwork, that would be charged to the community as opposed to within the combined RSU budget at this point. So a boiler goes in Wyndham High School would be charged to the Wyndham taxpayers, a boiler goes to Jordan Small would be charged to the Raymond taxpayer. So that's how that formula was devised at this point in time. In terms of the legality, the question is, to the extent that this was to go through and Raymond wanted to do a major project, let's say on Jordan Small Middle School, who would take the vote? And the legal opinion is that it would come from the RSU fourteen board, they would take the vote to say, yes, Raymond, go ahead and fix whatever it is, or make whatever improvements you'd like. So I know a question was posed, which was, you know, does that, does that make sense if Raymond's going to be making the payment? And the response was, why would Wyndham not vote for that to the extent that they know that Raymond's going to be making the payment for the improvement, and vice versa? So it really would make sense that one side would overpower the other, because the side that's doing the improvement has to pay for the improvement. And this board's never, by the way, operated in that manner, just as a side to one. I think that, does that answer the questions?
I think the last one, as far as if they're paying to Raymond, starts spending it out three years, why do it that way?
I could defer that, or, I don't know if you all understand, but I think it was just meant to be a way that would convince Wyndham folks that it could be to their benefit to make the change, and to make it in a fashion that would assure a positive vote from the
Is there anybody else?
Amy Brian Walker, twelve overall for Raymond. Two questions. One was, and I'm going back into my memory, which is always a very dangerous thing, if there was to be a new school built, and some of the students from Raymond are attending that school, am I correct, I remember seeing a documentation, which would be then, that costs of those students would be on a per-pupil basis versus the other kind of allocations?
Probably correct. You did read something, I might have heard, but yes, in the formula, what this says is to the extent that, let's just continue with the example, when the middle school is built, a new school is built, and ten percent of the students are from Raymond, then it would be the same methodology, it would be a capitation, ten over six hundred and fifty kids would be both charged.
So it's on a per-pupil versus a capacity?
Yes.
Okay, great. Actually, I realize I had only three questions. So the second one then would be, is, can you give us an insight as to why you decided on fiscal capacity only versus a blended fiscal capacity and per-pupil cost?
I think, as being a member of the committee, as I pointed out, we were able to drill down in terms of the ED two seventy-nine, to see how the formulas would work into the future, and it just felt the fairest methodology was to do the valuation component versus pupils. It is true, I know the point of the reason, the question is that, off the top of my head, eighty-one percent of the students are Wyndham students, nineteen percent would be Raymond's students, so clearly, if that was a breakdown, the cost for Raymond would be significantly less than if it was as devised by this particular formula, but that's how the committee came in.
Last question was, what happens if this isn't approved by voters on March eighteenth or something? Does the old, what happens?
Yeah, I would sense that we would have to operate with the old formula, do a broad old formula for.
Thank you very much.
If I could just speak to, we really did a lot of looking at options and possibilities, and while it might seem fair with the number of pupils, Raymond has a very different valuation than Wyndham, so either one of them would have been sort of, you know, there was no blending that could happen, then just to do it, the number of pupils didn't make any sense either. What made the most sense, when Jennifer did all her calculations, looking at the ED two seventy-nines, and the fact they came out at sixty-four thirty, sixty-four thirty-six, it just was so logical, just all sort of made sense, and people did all sorts of different numbers, and we spent many hours doing this, and everybody was agreeing that that seemed the most fair. And the one that we could present to all of you that would be also reasonable to both communities, which was also a decent idea.
And again, just so everybody's aware, I know some people are, and probably some people aren't, that committee that worked on the cost sharing was actually made up of two board members from Wyndham and two board members from Raymond. Yes, please?
Please, Lester. On that last statement about if the, in March eighteenth, that is a pass, that we would stay with the status quo, but under number nine here, first of all, I would like to say that I would think that there would be amendment of some sort, and a new election, new vote, but if that's not so, and under number nine, it can be revisited with a petition signed by ten percent of the voters from the last presidential election to push that out.
That's exactly correct, but I think your first assertion is correct, which is, I've known this board for a while, I'm sure that to the extent they hear from the public what their issues are, that they would immediately amend and try to find a happy medium for whatever, a new proposed cost-sharing formula.
Okay, to be clear, let's say it does pass on March eighteenth, does it then go to referendum in June or November, or is that the final vote on it?
No, there's no referendum, it's a public meeting, raise your hand, meeting, so at that point in time, it would be, if it's affirmed by the public, it would be in play for July one, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, and it can be, according to the rules here, you can have a secret ballot?
Yes, thank you, I did look into that, I appreciate that, so that could happen.
Good evening, Tom Bartow, Wyndham resident. Couple of questions, clarifying questions. On the formula and the valuation, is that reassessed every year?
Yes, it is.
From the state?
Yes, it is.
So the numbers will, may or may not change depending on that ratio?
I would say it would change.
It would change, one year to year basis?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I have a real problem with the debt service cost-sharing proposal. To me, it just continues this town versus town, this us versus them thing that's going on right now. If we're going to be an RSU, then we need to be an RSU, and the board needs to make decisions based on the best, what's best for the students and future students, and not necessarily where that's going to happen, whether, and forcing, if you would, that the decision upon each individual town really seems to me just an us and them. Don, I don't mean to criticize what you said, but you said if the town comes to the school board and decides, and the town wants to fix up Raymond Elementary or Wyndham Middle School, then the town, then the school board would come back and probably approve that? I mean, that is just completely opposite of what should happen. I mean, the school board should decide what the needs are of the RSU, and present those to the public as the RSU, and not each individual town.
You may have misunderstood me, or I may not have been clear. The board is the governing body.
Right.
So to the extent that anything's going to be done in the property, it's a board decision. So it may be that the public in each community has an interest, and brings that interest to the board, but the board would be the bonding agent for whatever it is.
Well, and if the RSU, if the board decides that a major capital expenditure needs to happen in Raymond, we'll say, the Raymond voters would then have the veto power over that, or how does that? How does that work if, if, or the same thing on the Wyndham side, I, I, how does that work as an RSU, as a unit?
It, it still is incumbent upon the RSU to make the decision, it doesn't go to the public, well, uh, forgive me, to the extent you're gonna bond in debt, then of course you, the RSU would have to be the governing body to brought the proposal forward to the public.
And, and which public decides on, does the whole RSU public?
Yes, it will be.
Decide that Raymond is gonna spend their money on?
Yes.
Only? So the Wyndham Raymond RSU, the public from the voters of the whole unit, could decide that Raymond is gonna pay for capital improvements at Raymond Elementary?
Well, I, I think to clarify this, that's not the decision point, the decision point now is what's the cost sharing formula gonna be? To the extent that people agree that this cost sharing formula proceeds, it isn't a question at the point of deciding to build a building, what the cost sharing is gonna be, that's already been determined, that to the extent that the public votes to have a new building in Raymond, it's gonna be paid for by Raymond taxpayers, so it's not a decision point of the, of the cost, it's a decision point of do you proceed with the, with the debt?
I, I ju- I don't, I don't see the, I don't see the logic behind it. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I mean, it just continues this, what's Raymond's, Raymond's, what's Wyndham's, Wyndham's kind of thing, and not as a unit. And if, if the unit decides to, to do something, and the school system decides to do something in Wyndham or Raymond, I'm assuming it's for the betterment of the school unit and not the students in Wyndham or the students in Raymond. And I, I, I just think it just continues this, this us and them type of, type of situation.
Thank you.
Can I just speak to that for a minute? I'm not really hugely educated about this, I'm running a little more. Um, most in SADs, there's a cost sharing formula, going forward with this, my understanding is, there's no place up in state that's attempting to do this kind of cost sharing formula, so the kinds of questions you're answering are really, are asking are really good ones that we're asking ourselves, because there's no model for this, at least from what we're understanding from, um, attorneys and, and people in the state. So this idea of kind of separating out cost sharing of these larger expenditures is very new and different. So that's my understanding, so we have good questions that we're sort of as- asking ourselves as well, because we have to really wrap our heads around this idea of most school units, you, everyone shares those, those costs, and, and that's how it's been done historically. So we're kind of making history in a way, trying to do this.
Well, um, I guess I'm concerned about that.
Well.
Um, I, I really am, because I, I, throughout the last year or so, um, the only thing we adults seem to be talking about is money, and not about the education of the students, and I think that's where we need to get to. Uh, I, I don't, I, to be honest with you, I'm not gonna speak to the, the cost sharing formula, the other side of the cost sharing formula, because, to be honest with you, whatever cost sharing formula you put up, people will find fault, other people will think it's great. So whatever you, you folks can come up with that's based on something, um, reasonable, then I think, you know, I think you've done your job. I ju- this, this part of this whole discussion is, on this debt service, is something that really, I, it just, it bothers me, and as soon as I read it in the paper, I was, I was, uh, I was upset by it, because it just continues.
So can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What do you think would work, as a, as someone who certainly knows the community, but also as a taxpayer? What, what do you see as being fair and equitable and just?
I think what works is becoming an RSU, uh, looking at the whole system, figuring out what facility needs there are, where students should go, for the best education opportunities for whatever student there is. And, you know, if, if that means that some improvements have to be made to Raymond schools, or Wyndham schools, however that works, is how it works. The boundaries, I know you, the board and have, and administration have tried desperately with eliminating the border between Wyndham and Raymond, and I know it's been very difficult, I can tell you, I do not have students in schools, so I, you know, I could be outside of that and say, you know, kind of crazy one way or the other, but at the same time, in the RSU, there is no border there. And I think that's the way the RSU needs to be managed and, and structured. And, uh, you know, I, I, I would love to see, you know, if there is excess capacity in a school, maybe we can, you know, move that school to a specialty school, or a school of the arts, or something, move, you know, students who are really fond of the arts to, to go there, uh, you know, on a daily basis, or things like that. There are things that we can do as an RSU with the facilities that we have, with the, with the faculty and administration that we have, uh, more than what we are doing, I think that, uh, that's what I think we should do, is be an RSU, be one unit, and if we're not gonna be one unit, then, you know, we'll see what that happens when, you know, as, as this process moves along, because we may end up being two units. But, uh, I'm just concerned that, again, this is kind of a continuation of that border that we have. That's as well.
Debt made a window, uh, Don, a couple of questions, do you have a capital plan presently for capital improvements?
Yes, we do.
Do you have fund balance?
Yes, we do.
Unassigned fund balance?
Yes.
Now, I'm assuming that both of them have been developed from the funds of both communities, have they not?
Yes.
So in doing this, uh, are you telling me that we have to put some formula together to take a portion of capital and a portion of unassigned fund balance and divide the two?
I think, yes, I think, um, there's a couple of ways to go about that, I, first of all, for the public, I'm not sure they're familiar with the way it works, so I'm just gonna do a little history of that, which is, there's a regular operating budget, and in the operating budget, there is the facilities are made, it's an operations section, so monies are held in that account to pay for improvements that need to be made in the district. Uh, in addition to that, if we're fortunate enough to have unallocated fund balance at the end of any fiscal year, we would work with the finance committee and the full school board to see if they were interested in, in putting money into a capital reserve fund, which is a legal fund that's been developed, uh, for the RSU. So specifically, what happens is when we go to the budget meeting, the hearing where we raise our hands, there's an article that says, will you approve putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in unallocated fund balance into the capital reserve for a specific purpose? And so recently, as you know, we've been doing work at the primary school, uh, busting through the safety, so that was an action that the, that the general public took and agreed to, so to the extent that there's unallocated fund balance, um, my sense of that is that it would be in the split, which is the sixty-four, uh, thirty-six, um, and that, um, to the extent money was to go in there, this board could determine which town was to be allocated the funds by a vote, and it could be known to the public that if we're gonna put, I'm gonna use an easier number, three hundred thousand dollars into the reserve, the three hundred is gonna be earmarked for a project in Raymond, and the three hundred is gonna be earmarked to a project in Wyndham, or any combination thereof.
I, I understand it, but I don't understand the answer. The money's put in a lot, the money's dedicated for different things, that's your budget. The way the budget's being put together now, the four, four million dollars after the safe is their money. If there's anything left over, like you just said, it'll go into unassigned fund balance. Um, there's also money being put in for capital, for capital improvement.
That's in the operating.
Right, that's in the operating budget, but it's, but it's there, it's in there, a- and it's being put in, if whatever the share is. Um, I just don't understand how that money at, at the end, if it, if it doesn't get spent, spent, is gonna be divided, and then what parts it's going into, or what it's going to. You, you'd get, say there's a hundred thousand dollars left over at the end of the year, and it's sixty forty, we, to get just a round numbers, they're gonna have a vote at the end of the year to take sixty thousand dollars of that, give it to Wyndham to do whatever, or put into whatever, and, and another forty, Raymond's gonna vote on to do the same thing?
Well, it's one public hearing.
All right.
So the board would have, would have the opportunity, should they have agreed to that, to say to the public, who now have to vote on the warrant article, that they wanna allocate sixty thousand unallocated fund balance for a project in Wyndham, and forty thousand, they could do that. I'm not suggesting that's what you'd wanna hear, or want to have happen, but that could be done.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and I mean, if, if things are fair, that's what's gonna be done. I'm in agreement with Tom. I mean, RSU don't have any lines, a lot of this picked up because of an empty school trying to put kids in it. The board was in favor of it for a certain amount, amount of time, once people started yelling, they weren't in favor of it anymore. It's an RSU, this treaty is an RSU. You know, if Raymond thinks they can survive on their own and wants to get out, then that's something that comes on the next step. But presently, we're an RSU, I just think this creates too much difficulty. You know, I, I can't see at the end of the year, this school running two separate bookkeeping, one for leftover or capital that's gonna go to one city, and another for another one, and I haven't heard that mentioned on how that would be split out, but, um...
It, it would, I'll just give you my opinion, it would be, uh, currently, we do have a formula, which, as I pointed out earlier in the presentation, is a model whereby Raymond pays for a component of un, uh, unapproved state funding, so you would have to break that up, but you're exactly right. If it's a hundred thousand dollar boiler, um, that goes to one community, then the community assessment that the, the elected officials see on a annual basis would have to reflect the fact that on one side of the equation, there's this additional cost for the boiler at Raymond Elementary, and there's an additional cost for two hundred and fifty thousand per room, or about that, and the Wyndham High School, I mean, that, that does become difficult. There's no question about that.
Um, I think, um, I'm kind of running a little long here, but I, I think I'm hearing, uh, a, a, a similar kind of thing, that the issue, um, what I'm hearing is that, where people have a problem is the debt service portion of what we're presenting here, and, and the other thing is, I, I wanna make sure that people are aware that we will have another, uh, abbreviated session of the same thing on, on our board that are meeting, um, and, you know, of course, we're here to get input from everyone as to, you know, what your feelings are on, on this, this is kind of like the first time that we've got feedback on it, uh, we put it out there with the hope that people have something, um, to say, you know, 'cause we wanna hear everybody's opinions and comments on, you know, what is, what is, um, this is good, and what could possibly be an issue, um, and it's, it's sounding like, um, that there might be a little bit of looking at that we could do as a board on the debt service piece of it, and I'm not saying it can change, um, but I, I think we're getting the feeling that people aren't too happy, so, um, I don't feel that it's a, a workable solution.
Hi, please will say that again, I guess I'd like to ask the board how they can ask the people to vote, when you guys don't even have the answers to all the questions yet, like Jerry just said, this is new ground that you guys are breaking in on, and the people that have come out tonight are still looking for answers. You know, the, the RSU, we're all still looking for answers as to how this whole thing would work, but I guess, um, you said any answered questions that are asked and aren't answered here tonight are gonna be, be put on the website, but you're asking somebody to vote to make a big decision, you know, next month, March eighteenth. So my question to the board is, are you really ready to do a vote for March eighteenth, if you guys aren't full on understanding and have your heads wrapped around it either? Because it is confusing, so is it good to hold off the vote, or is it good to get some answers to some questions that need to be done? Because that was my issue from the very beginning, to make this an RSU and utilize what we have first.
Um, it's, Don, correct me if I am wrong, but if we do not have the vote on March eighteenth and put it off till later, this will not get into the next.
Yeah, my, my recollection is that it's a ninety day period of time prior to July one, that, that all has to be taken, um, so, I'm not really, uh, as a person.
No, go ahead.
No, no, I'm good, I'm positive.
Um, Brian Walker again, um, I, I need to stand back up because, Saboni, I don't want you to walk away with the wrong impression, which right now, you do not have, all I would give is ask questions, so now I will give a little bit of you. Do I think this is perfect? Is it exactly what I want? No. Do I think you guys did an awesome job of trying to find compromise? Yes, I think you did. I don't like all of it, but I will say that one of the things that does seem to make sense to me is the debt, and the debt servicing approach, and here's why. One of the biggest concerns that Raymond has right now is that there's a construction of a middle school in there, and I mean, and really, I know you guys know this one, this is in this Republican, this is from Patel's, um, identification, that because it won't be state funding, that most of this would be utilizing the cost sharing formula, and whether that's sixty forty, whether that's fifty-five, forty-five, or whether it ends up being thirty-six, okay, Don, sixty, thank you. Um, that's an awful lot of money for a very small town. Wyndham budget, not the educational budget, but the, but the, the Wyndham town budget, is, I think, about fourteen million dollars here. Raymond's town budget is about four, we are a much smaller town, Raymond is seventeen thousand people, if you take, Raymond's about four thousand. So when you start taking a number that's not eighty twenty, which is where our pupil's at, and start applying the cost, the capital cost of a new school, that's probably at least twenty-five million dollars, you're talking about potentially breaking the back of a small town. I'm on the Budget Finance Committee at Raymond, which by the way, I'm not alone. Um, we, we struggle with things that are at the twenty thousand dollar level, and I'm not kidding, because we are a small town, we're also a very approval town. So the reason why the debt service approach works is because alternatives that have been worked on, like the utilization of an underutilized asset, has not been acceptable, so the solution, and I think you guys did a, did a great job of trying to do that, of utilizing an underutilized asset like the Jordan School in Jordan Small, or Wyndham Elementary, did not sit well with Wyndham, and I understand the reasons for that. But it's hard, we're hard pressed in Raymond to see how we would be taking on, even at thirty-six percent, the construction of a new middle school. And that's the reason, I believe, why the debt service approach is taken as it is, is to work on the compromise. So I'd like to be one RSU. So I'd like to be one RSU as well, but right now, it doesn't seem to be working, and I think you guys have tried to, to work towards something to compromise where nobody's gonna walk away going, I love this, but everybody's gonna go, this is acceptable, this works, and importantly, it keeps the RSU together. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I think Michelle Jordan of Wyndham. Michelle Jordan, Wyndham, I have a question and a statement. I'm gonna ask my question first. Um, my question is, is there a requirement for how many people vote on March eighteenth? Or could it be like the twenty-five of us right here right now? Yeah, there's no requirement. It is required that it's a public vote, not a ballot vote.
As Louise pointed out, I think at the meeting, she would know better than I, but I, I believe a motion could be made that it could be, um, by ballot at that.
Right, but it's, it's where we have to all come together at six-thirty on Wednesday evening, not a, you can just do a, a poll kind of thing. Sorry, thank you. Um, and then the second thing that I wanna say is that, um, I think that this is a great solution to the cost sharing challenges that we're having. I agree that we wanna be an RSU, but I think what's most important is the education of our students in finding what's gonna provide that for them. And it shouldn't matter who pays for what or how we pay for it, but it does. Adults care. Adults have all these issues that our kids don't have. All they wanna do is go to school and have fun and learn and move on with their life. So I think that this actually helps RSU the best because it allows each town to pay for their expenses and for what's important for them, for their facilities. And that's okay, because we are totally different sized towns and we have different needs and different expectations for our children. But in the end, by staying in RSU, it gives our children the best education possible because it's a lot of kids getting a lot of services and the advantages of teachers working together and all of those great things that are happening is the education for our students. And I think this formula best matches all of those needs that our kids have. So I don't want you to think that you need to rethink it, that everyone in the audience thinks that. It's just not as important to, as a Wyndham resident, I do think it's a great formula. And it would be better if we could be combining everything, but it's just not gonna happen. So let's be combining the education, let's be combining our number one purpose, and pay for it that way that can make more people happy. Thank you.
I'm afraid, Raymond, uh, I'm not gonna attempt to speak with the helices of the student in front of me, but I'll speak in support, because I think also you've done an excellent job of pulling this together. Um, and Don, I watched your video on the Lake Region bus wifi system.
Did you say awake?
I, oh, um, and, uh, I, I, I think you've done a fabulous job. And I think you can see Tom's concerns that, from the perspective of a parent with two young women now that are almost, just as young that has gone on to college. Uh, the overlap for the RSU fourteen, for, uh, I think for our family and for many, is the high school. And, and we still have that kind of share component, cost share component preserved in the high school portion. It's a student, uh, we're two independent communities that's loud and fair with this entity or, or the vacancies in the, um, elementary school. We try hard, and we need to stay in back a number of years to make that, uh, fill up. And, uh, I think having the independence of our, having our kids close to our home when they're in elementary, middle school works. The overlap is high school, and it's still very much a shared facility. Uh, and, and that's where the RSU really is shining and doing its, its, um, doing its best part. So I, I speak in support of, uh, what you folks have put together and all the hard work and, uh, hope that, um, we can get folks out, uh, in March to vote the same.
Any comments from Raymond? I just, I was a little concerned to hear you say that it doesn't sound like we're happy. I'm from Raymond, and it's a really difficult thing what you're doing, trying to make so many people happy and juggle these communities, bringing up responsibilities and budgets. And, um, I just wanted to speak out for a lot of people who couldn't make it tonight from Raymond, my girlfriends, fellow moms, who are speaking on behalf of the kids, and just say that we do appreciate what you're doing, and I know it was hard, and we appreciate that you really thought hard about the budgets, about keeping our kids together and keeping the communities light. And I think for everything that you've done, we are appreciative, and I think it's really a good job, and I wanna make sure that you hear my voice, even though this is shaking and really hard to be up here, that, um, we don't not appreciate and have argument what you've done. It's a hard thing to juggle, and so it's appreciative that you try hard, and, um, there's not dissent as much as you think, I think. Anybody else? Only once, only twice? On. Um, I wanna thank you all, um, for coming. We'll continue on with our meeting. Um, I, like I said before, um, our force will have another, um, well, it will be in, in our, at our regular meeting, and we can accommodate this amount of people. Hopefully, we'll show up, um, and, um, and the vote is planned for March eighteenth. Thank you all for your comments, we really appreciate it. Okay, so. Okay, moving on, um, I have a call for a motion to call a second public hearing.
I move to call a second public hearing on the proposed change in the cost sharing formula for regional school unit number fourteen, as recommended by the board of directors for six-thirty P M. on Wednesday, March fourth, two thousand and fifteen, at Wyndham Town, Town Council chambers, and to approve the notices of public hearing and forms presented to this meeting. Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, and, uh, we don't have to do this again. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, is there any comments, any questions?
Would.
Comments in public? Seeing none? Okay, all of us in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, the next motion?
I move to call a regional school unit meeting on the proposed change in the cost sharing formula for regional school unit number fourteen, as recommended by the board of directors for five-thirty P M. on Wednesday, March eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at Wyndham High School auditorium, and to approve the warrant calling of the meet, that meeting and the form presented to this meeting. Is it five-thirty or six? Because I heard someone in the audience say it's six o'clock.
It's five-thirty.
It is about there.
It's five-thirty, um, again, five-thirty because we're going to your, 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 again, um, the folks who are watching the, of the hearing. Okay, all of us in favor? It is unanimous. Uh, we will now take a short recess, and we will continue our meeting in the, um, high school alumni conference room.